May request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 15th, 2022. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting, September 8th, 2022. Discussion and action to approve ASAP invoice 4692033 not to exceed the amount of $29,209.88. And discussion and action to approve ASAP invoice 4687621 not to exceed the amount of $36,563.94. And item A, approval of claims in the amount of $121,719.32 and payroll expenses of $182,851.19.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Item six, reports from staff. I don't believe we have a planning commission meeting report, do we? Hospital authority meeting. Okay, revenue and bad debt are right on track. The HRG company that is doing the new billing stuff is going okay. The hospital's in the midst of doing a technology update as far as inputting the different stuff at the hospital called MedTech, replacing EHR. That is in the middle of talks. The end-reach project is moving along. That is basically bringing doctors here to do minor surgeries, but there's equipment involved in doing some of these things, so they're in talks on loans, grants, whatever, to get the equipment needed for that. They're also working within the supply chain. There's been some issues of, you know, whether it be the hospital, nursing home, or something, using one or something, but they have to order cases of something. And they're making a push to work with all the affiliates to try to streamline that. The good news is that Dr. Gulliver, he is the consultant for respiratory care. He actually teaches our folks, he works in ENA, and also at OU, wrote a letter to the National Conference for Respiratory Care highlighting Share Medical System. And it was a long letter, and it was very impressive what he said about the care people receive at Share as a whole. So, anyway, they got a lot of kudos. And that's about it. Does council have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Next item is the public library board meeting. Mr. Dowling?
We have not actually had that this week. It'll be, I think, in Thursday, September 22nd. We're gonna pair it with some library board training.
Okay. There has not been an arena authority meeting, to my knowledge. Tourism Tax Commission meeting. Mr. Martin?
We did not have a meeting. We have a meeting coming Wednesday.
Okay. There hasn't been a board of adjustments meeting. The regional airport commission meeting. We approved one item to do a non-commercial lease for a hangar build to a person out of Florida that's doing some business in the area, and he's gonna use the hangar to fly in and out of, keep a car up here when he has to go do business. So, they approved that, and they approved reinvesting their CDs. And at the time, it was just to get the highest rate they could get for 12 months on each one of them. So, are there any questions regarding the airport commission meeting? All right. The next item is a recreation complex, or, excuse me, the parks and recreation board meeting.
We met on the 14th. The ARC's still having trouble with the roofing repair. They can't get the company to come back and fix the insulation that keeps falling down. So Courtney's still working on that. Courtney's also continuing her courses for certifications to help her with the pool and Kelly had advised her to do some bids for the parking lot, chip and seal, because it may need to be bid out, rather than having inside sources do it. The bleachers are needing repairs. They're 21 years old, and it's looking at about a cost of about $35,000 at this point. Currently, the sports are all going well. The grant for the pool will be submitted this week. And probably the most exciting news is that we're having an unveiling of pool plans on October 24th at 5:30 to 7:30 at the ARC. And we're gonna do a hamburger feed along with that.
Any questions, Gail?
Yeah, give me that date time again.
October the 24th, it's Monday, 5:30 to 7:30 at the ARC.
Any other questions? Thank you. There wasn't a cemetery meeting. Finance committee. Mr. Martin?
Very routine meeting. Crawford and Associates phoned in, and I went over everything in detail. We discussed some upcoming ARPA money and some upcoming CDs. That was really the gist of it. Quick numbers for you here. As of August 31st, cash balances for the city of Alba totaled $3.2 million. Investments totaled $1.6 million. Financial overview by major funds. Cities collected 15% of budgeted revenue and expended 14.6% of budgeted expenses. Sales and use tax totaled $396,000 during the month of August. This is up 3.6% from August of '21 and up 1.74% from July of '22. So, that's all I've got.
Any questions from Connor?
All right. Thank you, sir. I've got a little bit longer reports than usual, but I'll try to go fast. I want to first recognize our water department, and I think our council members are fully aware of the work that they've been doing for repairing lines throughout the city, inside and outside the city limits, on numerous waterline breaks. I'll be working to get the, I'm not familiar with the process enough, but we have what's called a star recognition program for city employees, and so I'll be working to get the members of that department that recognition, and hopefully have them on the agenda for the next council meeting. We could've had them on the agenda for tonight, but they're repairing another 16-inch line break, so, and looks like they're buttoning that up. So, they've been doing a super job, and I really appreciate their dedication to the people of our community. Gail mentioned the land and water conservation grant, and so they will be hand-delivering that on Friday. And I have signed all the documents that need to be signed. They're just going back over things this week to make sure all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and that we have a good application. The OML conference, probably the biggest thing that I've been part of the past month since our last meeting, and we did take Drake Lewis with us, Taylor went, Greg and Randy both went. I'd say it was a really good conference for those that aren't aware. OML is one of the largest, if not the largest and oldest, most active municipal leagues in the nation. They've been doing this for 107 years, and they really put on a good program between their networking opportunities as well as the education opportunities. There were many sessions that were of value, and I think we pretty much divided and conquered and got a lot of the education to, you know, add to, you know, the things that we consider when we talk about different projects. Everything from, you know, inspirational keynote messages to stuff on grants to rural housing and all that. I had the opportunity, and our council members probably talked with some of these and probably others that I didn't, and I'm probably leaving some off the list, but I did talk to Tyler Technologies about some issues we're having with running reports in Excel, and they're gonna give us some information on maybe switching to a cloud-based program with them for our in-code that would allow us maybe some better reporting capacity as well. Spoke with American Legal regarding our code of ordinance certification. We do need to get our code of ordinances brought up to date, and so we'll probably be getting ahold of them this week to do that. Had also been in talks with MuniCode, who had been part of, who is who we have been using for our codes, and, but American Legal has a better price point for us and same level of service. Both reputable companies, the municipal league would recommend either one of them. Myers Engineering was there. We were able to visit about our water projects. Kim and Horn was there. We were able to visit with them about our pool project. Waste Connections actually is not a contractor that we presently use, but they're a company that has some interest, and they had Drake and I attend dinner with them to maybe learn a little bit about that. They would be interested in submitting a proposal to us. That's not something this council has discussed, but other, at other times in the past, that's been discussed about sanitation services. So, I don't know. I don't know if, they certainly didn't close a deal with us or anything like that, but they did want to give us some information to consider. So if they send us something, I'll get that in front of you guys, and we'll have those conversations. It's not to say our sanitation department isn't doing a great job, because our sanitation department does do a great job. It's a matter of us being able to get them the resources they need to do a better job. So, but that was a conversation that was, like I said, we didn't make any, I didn't give them any inclination that we weren't happy with what we're doing. I did spend some time with Alan Brooks, who's a bond attorney regarding the water meter project, so he also visited with us on finance committee call today, and it looks like we're in line for a minimum of $800,000 if we can get our proposal in on time with the OWRB. And so he kind of has given us some options to consider with that. Talked to Park Hill Engineering regarding air car projects. There were several meter companies there. Korn Main, who we met in the special meeting, but also UTS was there, and I'm leaving some of them out. There's four water meter companies that were there at the conference that Drake actually took our engineer around to meet all of them and discuss their meter options, so that I think was good. And then I was able to, and then some of the council members, and were able to have conversations with some other city administrators and business managers regarding some potential opportunities in Alba. So, that, the networking this year was great. Spent a lot of, probably more than I've spent in previous years, probably three times as much networking as I've had in previous years, and I think it was a great conference. Glad to be home, but it was a good deal. And I want to also talk about, I want to try to read this, because there's some points I want to make here, and I don't want to miss anything. But we also attended the awards assembly. All towns and cities are dealing with the same issues as Alba. Some are on a larger scale, and some are on a smaller scale. It's easy for us to focus on the mistakes and challenges, but it's important not to lose sight of the great things we do. In my time as mayor, there have been nearly $90 million worth of positive outcomes and achievements that have helped to make Alba better. Don't lose that in the challenges and the complaints. We have a great many employees and citizen volunteers doing incredible things every day that allowed me the distinct honor of receiving Mayor of the Year for small towns and cities. What I've come to appreciate about this particular leadership position is that you have to learn to bear the brunt of the criticism, but sometimes when you're surrounded by people who are more talented than you, more knowledgeable than you, and just as passionate about our city, that sometimes you receive the credit that is due to far more people than you, than can ever fill the seats of this council or any elected position. Heather and the staff are working on an event to celebrate this award with the staff. I also want to invite the people of our community, the volunteers and other folks that help make Alba great, to come celebrate with us. We're gonna be announcing the details of that as soon as we get them worked out, but my point is that this is an award that's given to mayors, but it's honestly, it's everybody else who earns it. I'm truly honored and humbled to have been afforded the opportunity to represent our community, and I look forward to all the great things that we're gonna go, that we're going to experience in the days, weeks, months, years ahead. And I'm grateful for each and every one of you. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Just want to clarify one thing, Mayor. When you said the $800,000 to OWRB, that's $800,000 principal forgiveness on a loan, not an $800,000 loan?
Right. Thank you for clarifying that. Anything else? All right. Next item is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker. The speaker will approach the podium and introduce himself, and you'll have the floor. All right. I want to, because we're, I think this is gonna be a lengthy executive session, I want to recess from this meeting and go to the economic development authority meeting. And then we'll come back to the city council meeting. Can't find my agenda, Heather. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Alba Economic Development Authority. Please call roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 15th, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $4,744.46 and payroll expenses of $10,653.98. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Sorry. Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. For the record, Martin did not vote twice.
Yes, sorry.
The next item is discussion and appointment of Christie Vickers and Tricia Cote to the Alba Pool Citizens Advisory Committee. Dalton, Beeler, and Blake Jordan have worked very diligently on behalf of that committee while they were on there. They have each asked to step down because of other obligations that are taking more of their, prioritizing their time. And so I have asked, I'd had a meeting with Christie Vickers, who is in part of the leadership with Friends of Play, that have helped do a lot of things for Hatfield Park, because the, you know, as the pool advisory committee kind of completes its work, it's likely that we're gonna be moving towards Hatfield Park and even Bud Rose Park after that. And so Christie and I had a pretty good conversation, and I asked her to, you know, give some thought to who else might be able to serve in that capacity on this advisory committee, and she recommended Tricia Cote. And so I have for you to approve these appointments.
I motion to appoint Christie Vickers and Tricia Cote to the Alba Public, or Alba Pool Citizen Advisory Committee.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve Christie, to appoint Christie Vickers and Tricia Cote to the Alba Pool Citizens Advisory Committee. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. There are no items of new business, so we will adjourn. And we will return to the city council meeting. Item eight on the city council agenda is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to A25OS307B1 to discuss city business manager, the city business manager position. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
All right. Have a motion by Mrs. Beer, a second by Mr. Bowman to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
All right. I'll ask that counsel, legal counsel, and the clerk remain, and the rest of you, we'll let you know when we want to talk to you. Turn from executive session. We don't have any action to take, but just for the sake of public awareness, the council has directed Mr. Cunningham and myself to start some contract negotiations, so we will start that, and as soon as we have approved contracts, we'll be excited to announce what those are. Or you will be here when that happens. Not any action there, don't have any new business. Item 12, remarks and inquiries by council members.
Just wanted to say congratulations on Mayor of the Year.
Yeah. Thank you.
I've got something.
Just gonna cut to the chase. I'm resigning from my position on the city council. This will be my last meeting. Wanted to take a moment to say a few things, say what an honor it has been to serve the city of Alba and its citizens. I've appreciated every moment, and can truly say that every moment of work spent on this council has been to make Alba a better place. Alba's a great city, has so much potential. It's a great place to live, work, socialize, and do business. I look forward to doing all of these things here for years to come. Did want to address some other things also, to address some of the extreme negativity that I've seen during my time on council. You know, I think there's been some interesting times and topics that have come up, and, you know, I feel that there's a certain way to handle things, and I'm pretty proud of the way that I handle things, and I hold myself to a certain standard. So, you know, I just think, you know, a lot of social media stuff and, you know, things like creating Facebook groups or things like that, making nasty comments on social media, I really, that's just something that I really don't like, and, you know, I think that some, you know, before, before you say something like that or do things like that, you know, I think it's something, you know, you should think to yourself, is there, can this be handled face-to-face discussion? Can this be a quick phone call before I blast something out there that's inappropriate? Is there some sort of action that I can take? Or is somebody that I can talk to to get more details before I make assumptions? On that note also, you know, I, there's a lot of challenges that a city faces, Alba faces, and, you know, on that note, I think that, you know, making cuts and sticking your nose in the corner, hoping things get better, that's only gonna make things worse. I think taking initiative, action, and calculated risk are the only way to compete in this always forward-moving world. And lastly, I want to give my unwavering support to our city leadership and staff, our fire, police, and EMS, our recreational complex, our hospital, our great public schools, our great Northwestern Oklahoma State University, our future city swimming pool, and our future state-of-the-art multipurpose arena. What an awesome, unique, opportunistic place Alba is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, thank you.
Connor, you've always brought in a unique perspective, and I've appreciated it. You've, you have been everything you just said, you've not rushed to judgment, you have been respectful of process, you have all of those things, and I, there is a certain quality that is often missed, and I often miss it, that there is usually no need to repeat what's already been stated, and it can be agreed upon. And I know that you have served in that way, and we've had those conversations, and that is something that I've admired about you, that we don't have to talk just to talk, and that when you talk, you mean it, and it's worth saying, and I've appreciated that. I know you're gonna continue to do great things for the city of Alba, and hopefully whoever comes and takes the seat behind you is going to have the same commitment to our community that you have.
Bye.
Anything else? All right. We got one more meeting. We'll adjourn this one and open the regular meeting for the Alba Utility Authority. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 15th, 2022. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $29,553.40 and payroll expenses of $51,612.86. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda.